Yeah, we're.
You like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be a lot better. Now if I can get the sound, that's what we're working on now is the sound system. And then if we get the sound in, then we can hack up the monitors and everything, the camera, then we should be able to hopefully by maybe next meeting. Sit in this small room here.
Send a tower this way, Mac.
Totally. I know, huh? They are they, they should be fixing those towers right there. Did you get a new one?
I don't know if we got a new one or an old one. I still, I still don't have any service over here.
Some no service. It's like they're slowly making their way up this way.
Probably got lost.
Yeah, yeah. Took a detour.
They get entrenched the wrong way.
That'll be the unofficial water well.
Still up.
Commissioner Gray stepped off for a second. As soon as he's back, we can, we can begin.
Start singing on.
I know. Is that a good screening?
I don't know. I just, it was a little bugged, but just.
BYU has some pretty good games next year. Look at that, little league football team playing Dixie.
I saw the Dixie, I like. I didn't want to play.
I know.
I mean, Dixie, I guess.
So true, huh? Okay, it looks like it is 11:01. We're ready to begin. We've got everybody here.
Well, caller made an order at 11, 11:02. So, roll call. We have Mr. Adams, Mr. Maryboy.
Yeah.
President, myself, so we, we have a call. Go ahead and. Go to the invocation. Is there anyone that will volunteer? If not, I'll volunteer somebody. Mr. Maryboy.
Yes, sir.
Did you do it?
I will, I will render the invocation. Please bear with me and I'll have Mac translate it after I'm done. I just want to let you know that. To give you a, to give you a. Heavenly Father God, in a time of hard times like what we're going through, we bow before you again. A lot of our people and a lot of us are mourning, missing our loved ones, our relatives. There's many times that I bowed before you and asked you for your guidance and help and, and you come through for me. Should like to thank you for that. At this point in time, Heavenly Father God, I'd like to ask you to touch the hearts and the soul of those that are in hospital, that are suffering, and those that are ill. We ask you that you be able to guide them in the road of life that they might be able to continue. No matter who they are, wherever they're from. We have community all the way from the state line, Bluff, Blanding, Monticello. Please, Heavenly Father God, touch the heart. All of us that we can continue to come out from the hardship, from the pandemic. And with that, I'd have you once again guide us through our meeting. What's best for the people, what's best for us? What's best for those that are needing? In that way, I, I ask you, Heavenly Father God, the holy people, Mother Earth, Grandfather Sky, we ask that you give us a good guidance and blessing for all of our staff and our commissioners and those are in the law, in the law enforcement as well as the EMTs and EMS. And I ask you and in your one beloved son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Public comments. I hope there's no more than 34.
I know, huh? Let me get everybody in. I had three waiting.
Last time we had 34. Or two minutes ago.
I don't think we have as many people here. I see everybody's just coming on. So if you're just joining us, we're at the public comment section of our meeting. If you'd like to make a public comment, raise your hand. I've got a Marilyn Holly who popped up first. Marilyn, I see you should be able to unmute yourself. Just as a reminder, just we're given each public comment three minutes and within that three minutes, just state your name and where you live in the county. And just be courteous in your comments as well. If we get into a factor where we're starting to repeat one another's comments, just hold those if it's already been mentioned recently. With that, that's kind of the rules. Marilyn, go ahead.
Hello? Can you hear me?
I can.
We can hear you, Holly.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Hello, my name is Marilyn Holly. I am from Monizuma Creek area to south of Monizuma Creek Bridge. And also I am vice president of Ride Mesa Chapter. I would like to also a support comment, I guess, to, to, in regards to item 14, the letter to Director of the Bureau of Land Management requesting to the Bureau to reject lease offers for the McCracken Mesa area. So I am in support of that letter against the BLM and also the oil and gas. And I know that this, this issue was brought up sometime back, back about two years ago, I think. I remember that being, it being on the, being discussed in the commission meetings. But back then, even back then, we were, we were sort of against it because it's too far near the reservation line. And we, we as the people are against this because I think it should have gone back to the Navajo Nation and also the Yew Mountain Commissions. I don't know if that was ever done. I don't think we ever got a report on that. So I think that should be done first. And also, you know, it's, we in San Juan County in the reservations, we, we have all these pumps and pipelines and I, I live right in the middle of it. So it's, I really think it should be, you know, taken back and see what we can do. You know, even if, even, I guess what I'm trying to say is there's, there's more area.
Are you still there, Marilyn?
More area north of there, they can do this. And, and if it ever happened also, I'll talk about it too. So that's, that's what I want to say. And I am in support of that letter by, sponsored by Willie Gray Eyes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next one I've got on here, Amanda. She'll be able to unmute yourself, Amanda.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for the opportunity to weigh in this morning. This is Amanda Podmore, based in Bluff, Utah, and I'm a contractor with the National Parks Conservation Association. I also wanted to comment on agenda item 14, the letter to the BLM about oil and gas leasing on the Kraken Mesa. I support this letter and I just wanted to provide a little bit more additional information. I know there's been a lot of recent, recent leasing in this area, about 100,000 acres in the last three years. And the leases that are talked about in this letter are still being protested actively by tribes. And so those leases have not been issued, which has created a lot of legal uncertainty. So I think it's a good opportunity to grant those protests and reject those leases. Specifically, the two lease sales in this letter brought forth by Commissioner Gray Eyes are of critical cultural significance. The BLM's own records about those two leases say that there are over 700 known cultural or archaeological sites in those. So again, 700 known cultural sites in those lease sales. I think that there's really an opportunity to step back and have better tribal consultation. I know when I was talking to the Aneth Chapter, which is directly adjacent to some of these leases, they weren't even briefed by the BLM on a lot of these leases. So I think it's important that this letter is passed and that the commission works with the BLM to support better tribal consultation on issues like this in San Juan County. So thank you so much, everybody. I yield my time.
Thanks, Amanda. Okay, anyone else wishing to make a public comment? So raise your hand or unmute yourself. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else wishing to make a public comment. Okay, Commissioners, that is it for your public comments.
Going down to consent agenda.
Okay, on the consent agenda items that you have today, you've got for your approval, the check registers for the week of March 10th, or let's see, sorry, February 10th, 2021, through February 17th, 2021. You've got the check registers for February 18th through February 22nd. You've got the approval of the February 16th commission meeting minutes. The next one is the Children's with Special Healthcare Needs Contract Amendment for fiscal year 2021. This is to provide additional funds for that contract for this fiscal year. It'll go until next year. You've been amending these every year since the beginning of the contract. This is specific to special healthcare needs for, for children in the county. The next one on here is the request for approval for a loader program for 2021. Last year, you participated in this loader buyback program as well. It cost us $174,500. At the end of that one year term, we're able to sell back those rollers for $177,500. So we make, we use the vehicles, the rollers for a year, we turn around and sell them back and we made $3,000 in total. So just roughly $1,000 through this lease. And so you're allowed to program for another year. That are the five items on your consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Hey, I have a motion by Mr. Maryboy and Mr. Adams, second. Any discussion to the five points? There be none others, and he say a.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Next business items.
Okay, then on here, item number six, you have consideration and approval of the Children and Teen book enhancement grant contract. This one will be provided by Nicole Perkins, our library director. Nicole, you are issued to unmute yourself.
Hi. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. And this is just a contract.
Hold on, this is that one, Nicole.
Sorry?
You read the consent, but you didn't read the business action.
I just, you want me to read the whole business action?
I was waiting for it.
The, okay, I can go ahead and read it. Hold on, this is a second. So for the business action, six through 14, I've got, so this one here, consideration and approval of the Children's and Teen book contract, which will be Nicole. You've got consideration and approval of the clinical affiliation agreement with San Juan County Public Health and Utah State University for assistance in the nursing education program as a clinical learning facility. Then you've got consideration and approval of contract with Utah Department of Health and San Juan Public Health for the building resilient inclusive community program for $13,500 for COVID-19 efforts. Number nine, you've got authorization and approval for the purchase of the LIVNAV dust suppressant. This will be given by Todd, our road department superintendent. Got approval of the beta award for lower, overall for Z-Eco on Spring Creek pit crushing. This is an award that goes to Harry, a little bit of $303,700 or $750. That'll be TJ as well. Got a request to approve the maintenance technician to career level position within the road department. Same TJ will give that presentation. On item number 12, consideration and recommendation of the award of Cal Black Memorial Airport US 96 Runway Rehabilitation Project and authorization of the county administrator to sign the notice of award on issuance of the FAA grant. On item 13, consideration and approval of the Cal Black Memorial Airport Grant with the Federal Aviation Administration. Administration, I'll present that. And then on the final item 14, the letter to the Director of the Bureau of Land Management requesting the Bureau reject lease offers for the McCracken Mesa area. That'll be Commissioner Gray Eyes. It'll do that presentation. That's your business action items.
Okay. With that, I'd like to recall. Resolution number 2021, I know two. As busy with the.
Motion.
Settlement agreement. My reason for recalling that, put it in that perspective is that Mr. Maryboy was second Mr. Bruce Adams' motion, original motion to accept the settlement agreement originally. And then Mr. McDonald covered the item of the legal portion of and recommended a lesion of that section, which, as I understood, the Mr. Maryboy, who's second, did not get the full understanding of it due to his horn dropping. And I would assume that he still set the motion when the amended motion was made by Mr. Bruce Adams. That's what happened.
Okay.
So in that sense, I would like to have it for the records, for those in order and reconsider that.
Okay. So with that request, we can certainly bring it back to the next commission meeting. Because it wasn't public notice on this agenda, we can't reconsider it today. We can certainly on the 16th, bring it back and have it as an agenda item and then reconsider the vote. Is that what you're asking for?
Uh, no.
You want it today?
Yes.
We can't today because of the, because of open meetings, I don't, regardless for, since that laws, we, we can only consider those items on the actual agenda. We can't consider anything new outside of the agenda. The public, they want property, no default. This would be new agenda.
Mr. Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, you are correct. And as a matter of fact, I contacted Mr., I, I asked Mr. McDonald that if we were voting on the main and come to find out it was an amended motion. So I, I'm supporting the settlement agreement as, as was. So anytime when any vote takes place, the prevailing side, those, the person that voted against it or didn't decide to support it has every reason to be dealt with. It's not new item. It's the, it's an old item that we dealt with and it's already operating, running. So you have every right to recall an item that's going. If this wasn't on the agenda, then it would be new item.
Question number one.
Mr. Adams.
I don't know. I thought Kendall was on the call. I'm not seeing him on there right now.
Oh, hold on. There's several that are in the waiting room. I just took in a second. I had three, sorry, that were in the waiting room.
Under, well, I don't know. I'd sure like to have Kendall on here.
He's joining now. He was on here a second ago. Got bumped off. Kendall, can you hear me?
These are the reasons why we need legal.
He's here.
On a meeting at all time.
Yeah, he's been here. It's like he's having a hard time getting in. He was here a minute ago and then it, he keeps on getting bounced on there. Kendall, are you, can you hear?
I can. Can you hear me now? I'm having some connection problems here at the, at the Public Safety Building.
Bouncing back and forth.
Can you, Kendall, as, under what Commissioner Maryboy has explained, does that mean that any motion or anything that we've passed in the last two years, if anybody has objected to that, we can call up at any time and revisit the, the motion at any time?
So, so I'm not sure. I didn't hear Commissioner Maryboy's. I've, I've been bouncing back and forth. I'm having consistency problems with my internet connection at the Public Safety Building. So can someone catch me up on, on that? I've been on and off twice now. So.
Do you?
Mr. Laws, this is Gray Eyes. I recall the resolution on the cooperative settlement agreement that we considered last meeting. And with the deletion of the, the legal section that had a section on it, anyway, that I recall to have it considered insertion into today's agenda, which I understand at the public comment that has already been made. that has already been made. So, I would like to read certain, and Mister Mary Boy seconded. That's where we are. The question is, even though that particular item was at last meeting, which was passed with some deletion, and I would like to call back for this meeting, reconsideration of that matter. So that's the, Mister Bruce Adams' question. Within the last two years, those items that have been considered, and do we have the option to recall it? That is
Especially if it's not on the agenda for today's meeting.
Right, so Matt, can you hear me?
I can, yeah, I put you on speaker.
Okay, because my, my computer was cutting in and out really bad. So, um, so the first issue is whether it can be reconsidered today. And the problem with that is that it's not on the agenda. If it was on the agenda, then it could be discussed, but you can't take action on something that is not on the agenda. It was on the agenda two weeks ago, but it's not on the agenda today. And so OPMA, the Utah Open and Public Meetings Act, requires that there be adequate notice and, and and publication. And there has been no notice or publication that that item would be on the agenda for today. And so, that, that would be the first issue. And so we don't really get to, as far as for, for this today, we don't really get to Commissioner Adams' question, because it's not, it, it wasn't advertised or put on the agenda. And so the public didn't have proper notice of it being on the agenda.
My question is this, Kendall. Can we call back any, any item that we've addressed in the last two years and replace it on the agenda for reconsideration?
Yes.
Something that been acted on, because we had taken an action on it, we were done with it, but I, I just don't know the law.
I mean, you, in, in, in theory, you could, if something has been acted on in the past, you could bring it up if, you know, because you have situations where the situation changes a little bit, and so the commission that it's a, that, that their position needs to change on something. And so maybe something has changed in the last year or whatever else. And so you properly noticed, if it was properly noticed and published, then you could rehear a topic if, if, if that was the commission's desire, because things do change occasionally. But in this case, it's a notice issue. It's an, it's an Open and Public Meetings Act issue. And so the problem, so, so, so let me just follow that through. If the commission were to go ahead and do it without, without the noticing and publication required under OPMA, then if someone were to challenge it, it would be undone. And so it would be as though it never happened. And so that's the, you would be wasting your time essentially to do that, because it wouldn't have any effect or, or legal backing, because it, it would be in violation of OPMA.
Mister Chair?
Mister Mary Boy?
The item has become an old business. It's been here, it's been dealt with. You have every right to recall it according to any of the Robert Rules of Order. So, I, I would like to have Mister Laws put that in writing. Because either way, he has mentioned that it could be challenged. Yes, it can be. And his guidance can also be challenged as well. So it's your meeting, it's your agenda, it's your item, and it's an old business. It's not new business.
Mister Chair, if, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
So, it's, it, this isn't a question of Robert's rules. Robert's rules is the, the county has, the county commission has adopted their procedures. This is a question of very well-established Utah state law. And that's, and the law is the OPMA, the Utah Open and Public Meetings Act. And so that, there is a difference from what Commissioner Mary Boy is saying. This isn't a question of Robert's Rules of Order. This is a question of state law. And it's a very well-established portion of, of state law that requires notice, notice and, and publication advertisement, so that the public is aware and so that there is transparency in the actions of the, of the legislative body.
Mister Chair?
Mister Mary Boy?
Mister Laws is your attorney. And he is also an attorney private. So his position is supposed to guide you, not to challenge you on your position.
I I, I will stick with my, my motion. If there's a challenge, then it could be open to that.
Okay, so your motion is to can you rephrase that again? I didn't catch the motion. I just meant, you could just mention you had wanted to recall that item. So could you just kind of clearly state what your motion is?
I recall in the resolution number twenty twenty-one hyphen oh two.
For today's meeting?
For today's, to be inserted into the agenda. Item number six. Since my reason for recall is there's some changes as Mister Law indicated. If there's some significant change, then it could reconsider. Mister Adams?
I'm, whatever you want to do, I find you the, but I'm just wondering, can you state what the significant changes are to that particular item are that you want to make?
Well, through the meeting that we had on twenty-fourth, the former legal counsel and the former board commissioner. What's his name? So they do stated that he doesn't have no time anymore. Is that represented the former commission or the current commission?
This is, this is the commission, lady on the commission, is that what you're saying?
The former commission, which was yourself, Mister Lyman, Miss Benal.
Yes.
So, he doesn't have any, anybody to represent him. So he's out of the picture.
So, I don't know if that was in the settlement agreement. Is that, so you'd indicated that?
Well, according to the resolution, Mister Law is supposed to terminate those contracts for the day. Which apparently, I don't know if it's, they put it in writing in the written form or not, but that's the outcome came out to be.
So the resolution still passed with the language in there? So nobody, we didn't take any of the language out of the resolution, other than we struck that final paragraph of the, of that resolution. So that's what you're saying that needed to be added back in?
Yeah. And then at the, at that meeting, it wasn't a public meeting. So the laws of public meeting didn't apply. But Mister Law denied, kept denying us to be at that meeting. And his reason was that we might have to listen at the same meeting. But when I found out that that particular meeting, it wasn't, uh, it's allowable. And Kenneth kept calling and calling and calling. He was never letting
Into that meeting?
On our executive session?
No, on the twenty-fourth with the, on the settlement agreement, discussion with the lawyers.
So
Was that the one in the clerk's office?
No, this was a separate meeting.
Separate meeting on the twenty-fourth.
Um, this, this meeting, this meeting is, is me acknowledging John David's work, the last meeting. I acknowledge that he has done a good job and I really appreciate it the way he did. He went way beyond his capacity to make sure that everything is put together. And I contacted Mister McDonald to, let's sit down with, with, with John and tell him and go over what took place. Instead of that, our attorney got involved in it and it all got political. To a point where he wouldn't even allow me to call him. And that really questions you. Do I have an attorney? Who's supposed to speak for me and my behalf? I was out here with nobody, nothing, no attorney. And I'm the one that tried to coordinate the meeting. So now, it seems like he is pretty much challenging everything that we're, we're trying to do. My phone kept dropping from here. And we were in the position to vote. And I didn't know that amendment was made. And we're voting, I seconded, and come to find out, I seconded to the amendment. And that's why I questioned Matt for the record, on record, that how did this happen? Then I guess, Mister Adam, you made, you made an amended motion. I am supporting the resolution, all the items, the red lines, just like the way Mister John David put together. And that's what we were supposed to talk about. So, at this point in time, it seems like we have no attorney that will speak and speak for us, although I'd like to have in writing his position. And also denying me in my, in the meeting that I was supposed to be in. I'd like to have all of that. And it's truly upsetting. Anywhere, where you go, anything that's on the agenda that you're voting on, once you vote on it, in that same meeting, you cannot talk about it, you cannot bring it back because it's been dealt with. But a recall is allowed. And now either he doesn't understand, or because right now we seem to be saying all of a suddenly that we're using the state law's rules. What about the San Juan County, Utah? What statutes do we have? So, just to satisfy our attorney, I know that he is not, just to satisfy him as a second party, I would like to ask for opinion. And our attorney doesn't know that. So we need an opinion from somebody. It's been done before. I've seen it happen before. So now, we're told that we can't do it. Thank you.
Commissioner, if I may, on the resolution?
Yes.
So I looked up the resolution, what was struck from the resolution was section four of that item that specifically states that the San Juan County Commission directs the county attorney and the county administrator to immediately take steps to secure the representation of Stephen Booze and/or David Irvine as the county's representative in the meeting and confer process established in the order. That was the only language that was struck.
Yes, I had to stand.
So, for the record, I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of it.
So how do you who is responsible to say here or there or recommendation when something happens, like a technical difficulty? It's, to me, it's a misunderstanding. No clarification. Such as sort of like a disguise. I don't know who would say you're right or you're wrong. So the, the problem is miscommunication. To the full understanding of the motion. That did not transpire entirely. So therefore, that particular matter is also impacted.
So, the final decision?
Yeah.
Yeah, if I may, I can speak to that. I think for me, you're always, your best guidance that you can receive is from your county. is from your county attorney. He's the one that's keeping you, especially as commissioners, for, he's making sure that you're following the law. Now, I understand your argument that laws can be challenged, laws can be changed. Taxpayers dine. And so, to me, under that principle, I always err on the side of our county attorney and put the rest on his shoulders. That's what his responsibility is, that's what he was elected to do. Not only represent, but you also have to understand he represents San Juan County as an elected official for that and so on. When you receive the advice from him, that's, that's what I'm doing. That's, he's just stating the law. As a commissioner, I mean, you, in a chair, you have the ability to change your direction. But if it's unlawful, you have that right to, you can be challenged.
That to bracket any further, you will put on the next meeting.
Next agenda, yeah. And that's the proper, proper process.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It's obvious that we have nobody to help us and nobody to guide us. It's the standalone between you and I. So, direct your administrator to reschedule, maybe a special meeting ASAP, either Thursday or Friday. And bring this particular items back onto the agenda. And in meanwhile, direct, direct our, our so-called attorney to be, for, for the county to write up the opinion that he's just barely alluded to. Again, we have no, we have nobody that's going to guide us. It's just you and me, Chair. So direct him to do that. As a second in party to you, have him set up a special meeting ASAP to deal with this.
Okay. So it's a special meeting, possible?
I'm not available to deal with them. Oh, I've got a...
Oh, it's your suggestion Thursday or Friday. As soon as possible.
Okay. I'll work with each of you on your schedules. We can get that done. Okay.
Okay. So, the calendar I have.
So I'll look at, I'll get with each of you off of line and then schedule that.
This coming Thursday or Friday, I'm all tied up too.
Me too.
Next week, I'm open.
Monday, I am open.
Tuesday through Friday.
So the eighth, week of the eighth?
Yeah.
Okay, let me try to get something either Monday or Tuesday.
Not Monday.
Not Monday, Tuesday? Okay, we can do Tuesday.
Oh. I want to have the education board. Oh, well, eight is also open, that's a different meeting.
Which date?
Eight through Friday.
Monday, the eighth.
Eight through 12.
Okay. Commissioner Ray, how about you? What's your availability like?
I'm going to be set Thursday and Friday. If anything goes wrong, I'll be waiting. If there's another date, I'll apply that too.
Okay.
Next week, what days are yours scheduled open?
I will get them open because I requested for special meeting.
Okay, Sunday then.
Sounds good.
Eight or nine. Thank you. With that underway, we'll go to the next item. Consider and approve. Go ahead.
Item number six. Consideration and approval of the Children's and Teen Book and Hospital Grant Contract. Nicole, are you still there?
Sorry about that. Thanks for holding. I know you're all ready to go. You should be able to unmute.
There you go.
Yep. So, this is just a contract, grant contract from the State Library for buying children's and youth books to add to our collection development. It's a $3,000 grant. We don't have to match it or anything. We just have to purchase the books from an approved, from approved lists that are well-reviewed, award winners, and have to extend the funds by a certain date. And anything that we don't spend, and they actually advance us the funds. Anything we don't spend, we have to send back. So, I'm just seeking to, for approval to have that sent back to the State Library.
Motion.
Mr. Mary Boye, motion. Seconded by Mr. Adams. Any further question? There being none, all there's in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Three favors, zero opposed. Next.
Okay, we've got the consideration and approval of the clinical affiliation agreement with San Juan County Public Health and the Utah State University for assistance in the nursing education program as a clinical learning facility. And let's see on here, let me get my book here. So this, this program here is pretty much in coordination and cooperation with USU Extension here in Blanding, where they do have the nursing program. This allows their students to come in to public health and participate on an education basis where they're able to receive months-on training. This agreement kind of overall allows for that. It stipulates through covering insurance for this, which is the USU. The term on this contract is five-year. It doesn't cost us, nor them, it's more of a mutual agreement. In total, the way I see it, is this benefits our population, our citizens here where they're able to go, get educated, have a place to practice during that education period. And then hopefully, if they like it enough and if they have availability for staff, then we can pick some of those students that have worked in our facilities. Any questions with that agreement?
Any motion? Approved. Mr. Adams, motion?
Second.
And it's Mary Boye, second. Any further question?
Yeah.
Mr. Adams?
According to the contract then, at our facility of public health, who's responsible to oversee the whole song? And she, she does the background checks and looks like the immunization check, fingerprints, all of those kind of things. Right?
So they would, the program itself, the coordinators may change on their, also the responsibility of the Utah State University to have all of that as well. And so, but yes, correct. Both her and you participated in that on the background checks, kind of overseeing, this kind of sets up administrative forces there that they have problems with. And there's a stupid Google clause in there as well as that participation.
These students, they are, it's already in the program.
They are.
So, the requirement for players already done.
Correct, but things happen throughout time. You're on a four-year nursing program. You want to make sure that you have accurate, correct current data. This is kind of taking it another step further is, as you look at vaccine distribution, we can easily coordinate with the nurses in the program and give shots as well for the vaccine. And just be a part of that team. All of the responsibility for students to rest in this program and this contract.
Any further question? There being none, all there's in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Zero. Three in favor? None opposed? Pass. Next.
Next item, number eight. Consideration and approval of a contract with the Utah Department of Health and San Juan Public Health for building a resilient inclusive communities program. This program on the contract gives us 13,500. This is specific to COVID-19 efforts. And it targets, kind of highlights the community food distribution, food nutrition, food banks, pantries, feeding sites within our population. And the efforts to increase the number of food banks, pantries and feeding sites. We don't really need additional here. It's mainly checking to make sure if they have needs in our local food banks that we can help with them and kind of help assist them in their needs and especially on distributing healthier food to our population. This is something that the state created specific to COVID-19. This won't, and with any of our staff on here, but it is something that we will, we feel that we can do with the staff that we have and push it out to the assistance of the food banks here.
Yep.
Make motion.
Motion made by Mr. Adams?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mary Boye. Any further question? There being none, all there's in favor, say aye.
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 Aye also. Three ayes, opposed? Zero. Motion passed. Eight.
Okay, on number nine. Yeah, on number nine, you have authorization and approval for the purchase of the Lake Mag Dusk Suppressants. This is a sole source contract for the year of 2021. Go ahead, TJ.
Basically, this is a program that we've been doing. We do it with the Forest Service as part of this to do up to the Jony campground. If you've gone up there, there's that road. You leave the county asphalt, there's a section of gravel, then there's the Lake Mag road. And that makes it really nice for people going to the Jony. So we partner with the Forest Service and then we do a few of our own roads here in the county. And so, there are a company out of Farmington, New Mexico that brings their stuff up here and does the forest so.
I used to do this down in San Juan. Brought this out a long time ago. That suppression. Used to herd sheep and the sheep would be moving down and making a lot of dust and I'd be walking behind. That's how they do it.
When we met with, when me and Mr. McDonald met with the Red Mesa Chapter, we brought this up to them. Commissioner Mary Boye was in that meeting on if they could get some funding from the NAL to do some roads down there that would be beneficial to do. But we've had a few meetings, but never did get any funding back from the different chapters. So that's something that, when, you know, in the future, that they could look at and do.
Well, in the background, sounds like the British are coming.
I mean, it's lunchtime.
Yeah.
Are you a motion?
Make motion.
Motion. I'll second.
Okay. That's good. Any question?
Call for the question.
Okay, all there's in favor, say aye.
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 Aye also. Three in favor, opposed? Zero. Pass.
Okay, on item number 10, you have approval of the bid award to lower overall bid for Zeke's Hole and Spring Creek Pit Crushing. This is 1.5 inch minus gravel, 25,000 cubic yards in each pit. This award would go to Howard and Lees for the low bid of $393,750. This TJ.
That was pretty much it.
That was it.
Motion.
We had four.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Mary Boye, motion. Seconded by Bruce Adams. Question, any question?
Yeah, yeah. Mr. McDonald, how many bids did we have?
We had four bids on those. One of them's up here, Spring Creek, just north of Monticello. The other one's off of Highway 95.
Are they, were they the local contractors?
No, they weren't. They're actually the furthest away.
Ooh, any of our local contractors bid for it?
What's that, Commissioner?
Any of our local contractors bid for it?
Yes, there was, there was three local contractors that did.
And who were they?
We had Crowley Construction. We had Holiday Construction. And we had LaGrande Johnson out of Moam. Crowley's out of, Holiday's out of Blanding and LaGrande's out of Moam.
Okay.
This is, this is the same contractor that is, that won the bid on the McCamel Creek Bridge that they'll be doing this fall. And also the Recapture Bridge that they'll be doing for UDOT.
Okay.
Data motion?
Motion.
Is that a motion?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Mary Boye. Any further question? There being none, all there's in favor, say aye.
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 Aye also. Three ayes, opposed? Zero. Next.
Okay, on item number 11, you have a request to approve the maintenance technician two, career level position within the road department. TJ can address this. This is kind of a structural change within his department.
So what we have in the road department historically is there's a ladder in operations to where you can be a laborer, then you move into light equipment and then work your way up to the heavy equipment. In the maintenance department, we do not have that. We just, you're either a mechanic and that's it. And so, what I want to create is a job that has a ladder in the maintenance department to where you can come in and be a technician, not necessarily a certified mechanic at the time, and work your way up through the years to be a mechanic for us. We have a little harder pool to pick from to just get qualified mechanics all the time when you're competing against private industry. And so this is a way that we could do it. And so this is a way that we could do it. We could build their career path, just like we do in the, in the road department, where you go from a laborer on up as you get more experience and more on the job training. So I'd like to create this position. It'll fall underneath the mechanic position. And so if we hire somebody there, it'll fill in a position that we have in our, our budget. It'll just give them a path to grow.
Good.
Career ladder.
Yeah, good.
Very.
Motion.
As far as skill, that portion is there.
Yes.
On the other side, the education.
Okay, so what I've got is we've got, we've got three levels that we put in our, this career ladder to get you to the fourth level, which is a mechanic. So there's an entry position, an intermediate position, advanced position. So depending on where you get hired and come in and fall in that is where you'd start. And then as you fulfill the skills and things, as you grow and get different licensing, different qualifications that can bump you up to where you'll someday become that certified mechanic for us. And so there is, there's three levels inside of this position that you can grow in.
Mr. Mary Boy motion? Second by Mr. Adams. Any further question? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye also. Three in favor? Zero opposed? Motion passed. Number twelve.
Okay, item number twelve, consideration and recommendation of the award of the Cal Black Memorial Airport, US ninety-six runway rehabilitation project and authorization of the county administrator to sign the notice of award upon issuance of the FAA grant. We had all of the proposals coming in for that rehabilitation project. We opened bids last week on there and we'll be receiving that notice of award. It comes from the FAA. The award on here or the lowest bid proposal that we received so far, and it's being vetted. We had four companies that actually proposed on that project and submitted timely bids. The one that has the lowest total estimate on there is Kilgore and LaGrand. So it's a local company here in San Juan, which is super encouraging. They bid two million nine hundred and ninety-six thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy cents was the low bid on there. The high bid went up to four million one hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-five cents was the high bid. And so our total estimate, if you remember back, and it kind of leads into the next item as well, was three million six hundred and twenty-five thousand was our total estimate that the engineering and our consultants had, had put everything at. And so to get at that low bid of two million nine hundred and ninety-six thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars was pretty favorable where it was under that overall estimate. And so this is just approval. There was really nothing in your packet to show for it. It's just once it comes through, we didn't want to hold the project up. Once the FAA releases that notice of award, we'd like to, I'd like permission to go ahead and sign that and get that going forward to begin that project.
A motion authorizing the, uh, Mr. McDonald to go ahead and sign off on the grant or award. Mr. Adams, uh, motion. Is accepted.
I don't see Commissioner Mary Boy.
Uh, second that. That, uh. All those, any further question? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Two ayes. Mr. Mary.
On air.
You back? Okay. Um, can you? What part did you miss? Did you miss any of that?
Have we voted?
No, uh, we, it's just directing, uh, Mr. McDonald to sign off on the award for improvement air, airstream.
Thank you, that would be good. I, I support that.
Okay. Was opposed? Zero. Thank you. Number thirteen?
Yep, number thirteen. We've got consideration and approval of the Cal Black Memorial Airport Grant with the Federal Aviation Administration. So this is the paperwork that goes before that. There's several signatures that were needed on there by the commission chair. But essentially what this is, is you put in the paperwork for the role of the money on a project. The notice to proceed will come after this as well and then the project's off and running for this year. With this, just kind of a note out there, we still believe that in all of the funding that is being proposed with the COVID relief at the federal level, part of, part of the funds from that COVID relief are earmarked for the FAA. And so we're still hopeful that the FAA will come back and, and fund this a hundred percent. We still don't know yet if it's, if it's going to be funded a hundred percent by the FAA. However, just as a backup, you did locate funds in this year's budget, which would be our, our five percent portion of that, which would be around a hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. You did budget for about any of our county budget, just in case. I'm hopeful that there are savings that the FAA will can fund a hundred percent, but we don't know yet until that everything is passed at the federal level.
Should have been level.
Please.
In every, in this case, fund that. One hundred percent.
Absolutely, we're hopeful. And they did last year on last year's projects. We'll see.
Okay. Any further question? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Uh, opposed? Zero. Three in favor, zero opposed? Motion taken. Fourteen.
Okay, on this one here, we have the, let's see, the letter to the director of the Bureau of Land Management requesting that the Bureau reject lease offers for the Kraken Mesa area. This one, Commissioner, I believe you were speaking to. Also note on, just on our emails, just something that we had noticed. I had noticed on those, you receive emails and requests. We do have San Juan County Commission email address that people can make requests public, can make requests to us to have agenda items added. And so I don't, you guys feel like you must to be the pass through. And so more people want to submit agenda items, we can do that. That's why I have you approve the agendas. Just that, making sure if all emails going to you, the same thing that you had mentioned at this meeting is making sure that two, one involved in a communicative email, because that can also be seen as a public meeting. And so just.
Motion.
Well, I tried to forward those characteristics that have directed to be to my email. So.
Make an email to other account too, if it helps you. I just don't want you to, if you missed something, and then keeping it on the county system. Because if you're receiving it in your personal email, that is gramable as well and opens you up to your personal email on a gram.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
With that, um, the oil and gas expedition proposed near the Kraken Mesa. It's supposed to have been my home, the Navajo Mountain, that was purchased for the Navajo Mountain. Anyway, uh, it's very sensitive area for archaeological and probably water. And those are the concerns that I have. I found out that the underground flow of the water is going probably from the Kraken Mesa down into the river, possibly down to Luffa. I would say due time, if there's any contamination up in those areas, that's going to infiltrate the lower puddle of water. And that would be, you don't know how many years it's going to be impacted. So you are subject to, that's standard, you're hauling water or the ceiling or something. So would recommend that you go ahead and send this, forward this later to be a lot of. Motion?
Second.
I want to make.
Motion? Okay, a motion second by Kenneth Kama.
Uh, I guess I'm just a little bit concerned about the fact that if we, we continue like Amanda Podmore and Ms. Holly this morning advocating for no oil and gas drilling and getting rid of the pumps and, and oil lines down in, uh, down on the reservation area. This is where the money comes from. Oil lines down in helps with the down on the reservation area and the ORF. This is where the money comes from. Oil line minerals helps with the down on the reservation area and the ORF. This is where the money comes from. Oil line minerals helps with the down on the reservation area and the ORF. This is where the money comes from. Oil line minerals helps with the down on the reservation area and the ORF. This is where the money comes from. Oil line minerals helps with the down on the reservation area and the ORF. This is where the money comes from. Oil line minerals helps with the down on the reservation area and the ORF. This is where the money comes from. Oil line minerals helps with the down on the reservation area and the ORF. This is where the money comes from. Oil line minerals helps with the down on the reservation area and the ORF. This is where the money comes from. Oil line minerals helps with the down on the reservation area and the ORF. This is where the money comes from. Oil line minerals helps with the down on the reservation area and the ORF. This is where the money comes from. Oil line minerals helps with the down on the reservation area and the ORF. This is where the money comes from. Oil line minerals helps with the down on the reservation area and the ORF. This is where the money comes from. Oil line flows, helps with the down on the reservation area and the ORF. This is where the money comes from. Oil line flows, helps with the down on the reservation area and the ORF.
I've written down oil and gas lease with, under Navajo Nation. Of course. We written on, so oil and gas lease with company had been Navajo Nation. Of course. We written on, so oil and gas lease with company had been Navajo Nation. Of course. We written on, so oil and gas lease with company had been Navajo Nation. I don't know. Sure, we written on even, so oil and gas lease with company had been Navajo Nation. I don't know. Sure, we written on even, so oil and gas lease with company had been Navajo Nation. I don't know. Sure, we written on even, so oil and gas lease with company had been Navajo Nation. I don't know. Sure, we written on even, so oil and gas lease with company had been Navajo Nation. I don't know. Sure, we written on even, so oil and gas lease with company had been Navajo Nation. I don't know. Sure, we written on even, so oil and gas lease with company had been Navajo Nation.
The end result is there are a lot of Navajo people that work in the oil field. Have jobs with Resolute and with some. There's royalty money that comes to the NRF and comes to the, um, comes to the Navajo Trust Fund. If you want that, if, if people want that all go away, they need to understand the jobs will go away, the money for the NRF, the money for Navajo Trust Fund, that'll all go away when, when the extraction goes away. I'm just making a statement. I'm not trying to argue with anybody or, or justify. I'm just saying, these are the facts. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mary Boy.
Thank you, sir. Um, members of the commission, Mr. Adams is, is quite right that the royalty bundles in the two parts. One is the trust fund and one is the, uh, the Navajo Revitalization Fund. But, um, I'm afraid that my position is the Navajo Police Commission passed a resolution. And you just already heard one of the chapter vice president allude to that. He's doing well. For most of the chapter, pass a resolution. I've been supporting this resolution that sits before us. You oppose any more extraction. And furthermore, the UTA Navajo has truly no control over the, at the NRF or the Trust Fund. The governor is allowing the base to control it as he pleads. A resolution is a legal finding document.
Address and alter with those that pass a resolution. So when a resolution comes before the NRF, with those, Mr. Dave, that pass a resolution. Resolution. So when a resolution comes before the NRF, with those, Mr. Dave, that pass a resolution. Resolution. So when a resolution comes before the NRF, with those, Mr. Dave.
I second the, um, the motion and, uh, we need to, uh, support this better as a chair.
Uh, if there's no further questions or questions, all those in favor say aye.
Now, this is supporting the letter, right?
Right.
Yes.
Aye also. Any opposed?
I vote no, because I think it takes away money from Navajo people. It doesn't affect me up here, but it'll affect people on the reservation.
And two in favor, one opposed? Motion passed. Anything else?
So the last item on your agenda is commission reports.
That isn't from me. All those meetings that I attend are also, and because health, health or.
Health.
Health or.
Health. Health.
Thursday with the chapters. We, and also we have a, a debate with Kevin Walker, the duty executive, Grand County Commission on Friday, two, at ten o'clock. But the question, how, enjoy the move from items between San Juan County and Loa, City of Loa. So with that, the other reports or?
Um, just, just a small report, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Pretty much just staying home and going out, loving food and, and checking up on some elders every now and then within the state line, all the way down by Henry Wash, Red Mesa, Navo White Mesa. Other than that, people are still concerned about the road made. It's wet and they're asking that the equipment be out here to break the road. And then also, we had a meeting with the, Mr. Doug. What was it? Doug, 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 I almost said Doug ahead of me. Still behind.
Oh, yeah.
Aye. Um. Came down, I told up, um, mind of what, what's going to be handed before the, the legislature. Uh, visitor center, what barriers next to mine is what is brought before us. It sounds pretty good. But I don't know how much control that the local party will have. And we all had the, had the time to speak and I spoke to the issue. And I told them that at some point in time as a county, probably send a supporting resolution. So we might want to consider that at the next meeting, if that's okay with the, with the administrator and the chair, Anderson Adams. The, the thing that I, I see with that is that they want to, they want to develop a permission or a board on the inner tribal coalition to have, to develop a board where they will recommend a place and where and how it's going to be operated. And it sounds like there's already money, seed money in place to start the construction. So it, it sounds pretty good to where we, there should be some economic coming into the counties. The only word that I have is how much of that are we going to, is the youth in Navo going to be losing or the local Native Americans, San Juan County? That's one thing. And I told them that this is the state position. So it doesn't matter what I or any of us or any N A T Y or anybody says, if the state decides to do it, they'll do it. But what's going to come with it is, is kind of like me, is what I told them. So I think we need to think about it and maybe give some ideas of what we'd like to see and how we envision this visitor center with the, so that way maybe we can have a resolution supporting of our recommendations through that legislation. So that's one thing that, that, that came up and, and the sad thing about the meeting with the, the parks and rec wasn't open the building for the whole general chapter. So we had to use one of the small vendors, uh, tiny corner in one of the areas. It was so small and we were all crammed in there. And I know that this was in the hand of the county at one time and we turned it over to the nation. I think, I think we might still have to say so on, on how that center is being operated. And we're quite disappointed for where maybe we need to send a letter to Parks and Recreation, Navo Nation, that the local community for whatever reason, for the chapter meetings or whatnot. That should be considered as part of the community as well. So that was the only disappointing part of the discussion that we had, we had. So with that, thank you very much, Chair. And we'll come back again next, next week.
Well, for your information, I just look at my calendar and I have a schedule on the eighth, which is a Monday. So that's out for me.
On Tuesday.
It could be Tuesday. The other thing is maybe two, two weeks ago, somebody mentioned his department of transportation, State of Utah is proposing to put up a, a looking point, what do they call it, on 163, going down, down the hill to look at those, you know where the.
Forest Gump Hill?
Forest Gump Hill, yeah.
Okay. A pullout, so a better pullout. Yeah, yeah. So they're widening that, making some modifications there.
Right. Love, more safer than.
Yeah.
People that, I experienced it and somebody died on the road.
Yeah.
Yeah. Posing for the camera the other side and I'm cut, crashing down. Way some, brake line is right there. So, and you inquire about that to?
To get more information?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They called me and told me they're doing it.
Yeah, it's on, it's on the way.
It's all right. It's going to happen. Create a big.
Yeah, but nobody is receiving any information.
Okay.
Nothing.
Nothing in El Chido? Because it's kind of in El Chido's area, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. They haven't heard anything.
Yeah, they don't.
Okay.
I thought there was a project on UDOT's website that would talk about it, I think.
Okay. All, yeah, I'll inquire on that.
Yeah, it was a safety concern and they made the decision they're going to try and address the safety concern by creating a pullout where people can get completely off of the road at Forest Gump Hill. And that's what I reported a couple of weeks ago. For anybody who was listening.
If any said, give me some direction to where to take out some information.
Okay. Find it. We'll send you an email.
Okay. Sounds like we're done.
And then I just need to.
Can I make a report?
Well, yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
It's all right.
Okay. Tomorrow I'll be spending most of the day on Zoom with, in hearings and meetings with the legislature and with UAC reviewing bills. The legislature's last day to meet will be this Friday at midnight. They'll be done. Thursday I have C I B meetings and again, meeting with UAC and legislature by Zoom to look at things that are going through the legislature on Friday. I have a meeting with National Association of Counties broadband initiative. Again, there was only 30 commissioners in the United States that were invited to be on this committee and we have a committee meeting on Friday. Also working with the legislature and Department of Natural Resources that day to kind of finalize any input with the, with the legislature, because they'll be out of session at midnight, Friday night. That's what I have to report.
Thank you. Question, comment, recommendation? They're being done. If there's no motion, I declare beating at three. Twelve thirty-eight.
Second.
Twelve thirty-eight.
Yep, twelve thirty-eight.
Hey, thank you, guys.
Thank you. You may come back down to your house off the hill.
That's where they're at. All right.